Good evening, good evening, everyone. We would like to begin our open mic. The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern in the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers in the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least eighteen years of age or enrolled in high school in a Lynn Public Schools district. And having discussed their views with a student government representative, the chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. We may begin. Do we have anyone signed up? Okay. Anyone wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic. And we will close the open mic session and move into the fifteenth regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Member Reed? Absent. Member Sadaway? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
For those who are able, you please rise for exclusive flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. Of allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone could please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Helena Sano Haley, retired paraprofessional passed September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you. All right, next item is the minutes.
I make a motion to accept the fourteenth minutes for the fourteenth regular meeting on September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Nice habit. Next item is a human resources update.
Good evening, everyone. If April Reed and Deb Morel could join us, they're going to do the presentation this evening. Use your loudest voice.
Good evening.
Louder.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're gonna go over some human resource updates and some procedures we've been trying to improve over the course of the year. Okay, so today we're gonna focus on strategic priority number two. And that is ensuring LPS educators are diverse, highly qualified, and provided with the resources and supports they need to serve the LPS students. So we're gonna look through initiatives two A through two D. Some of the things that we have done to improve the human resources onboarding process is that once we hire, a new hire, we reach out with a personalized email to kinda have them get that connection with Lynn Public Schools. As they're going through their checklist, we kinda do a halfway mark check-in to see if they need any assistance, any help with anything. Another process that we're just starting to implement is a new hire onboarding survey. We did some last year, but this year we sent one in September. And then the goal is a sixty-day and a ninety-day mark to see how things are going and what we can improve for them. Also, at the new hire orientation, we provided new hire booklets. You have a copy of that. The idea is that it's very overwhelming at the orientation, so we give them a booklet, who they can contact for platforms, HR, payroll, you know, anything that they need in there, and as well as benefits and payroll information. Some of the other improvements is district-wide forms, leave of absence, sick bank, sick day, and resignation. So the goal of it is that a lot of times we don't hear about maybe someone's out on a leave, or they've resigned. And so to streamline it, make it an easy process, we have the forms everyone can use. They send it to HR, and you know, then it gets approved from there. We're continuing with our HR newsletter, just so that we can provide updates on anything with the district and resources that they can look into. On recruitment, currently, we travel and participate up to twenty career fairs. And so we're continuing with that. We're always looking for, you know, new fairs to attend to kinda broaden our recruitment. We're maintaining our memberships with the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. Our goal now is to really expand that and look into historically black colleges and universities, the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities as well. We're still advertising on our platforms that we use. We did expand this past school year with the El Mundo Boston Latino Career Expo and digital bulletin boards. And you'll see a snapshot on the screen of just an example of what was posted on a digital bulletin board. There was like I ninety-three to Boston, from Boston, and on Route One to attract some talent. For retention and growing our own, the goal is to promote wellness for staff and a positive work environment. We want them to have a sense of belonging within the schools. We're also gonna update our recruitment materials just to highlight like our affinity group, the DEI work that's happening, so that we can, you know, continue to attract new hires. In regards to growing our own, we provide differentiated programs for new hires in special education, dual-language, MLE. We really wanna connect with our student teachers with meet-and-greets, check-ins, cuz we really want to, the college interns that we do get, we wanna be able to hire more of them. We want them to feel a connection to Lynn. And on here is a quick a chart of diverse teachers within the district. In school year eighteen nineteen, we were at seven point two-nine percent. Within the last three years, we've increased to the current year. So school year twenty-four twenty-five is as of September twenty-sixth. That's when we got the figures for this. So we're at ten point eight-six percent at this point. Administrators, we've definitely increased the diverse number of administrators as well. As of September twenty-sixth as well, we're at twenty point two-eight percent. And then we have our paraprofessionals. This has pretty much been even. Twenty-four twenty-five is a little bit lower, but that's also because those numbers fluctuate throughout the year based on the needs of the students, if we need to hire more paraprofessionals.
I'm gonna jump in. So our strategic initiative is around highly qualified, and we're talking about licensure. So this is a pie chart of licensure as of last week. So the good news is the majority of our educators are qualified in that they have a professional or initial license, which means they already have gone through a college or university program to be a teacher. So as you can see, we have quite a few emergency licenses and waivered teachers, so we're gonna talk a little bit about what we're doing for those teachers right now. So as you know, due to COVID, they came out with the emergency license. They're no longer giving out emergency licenses, but you could get up to two extensions on an emergency license. And the only qualification for that was a bachelor's degree to start. After the first round of them, they did start requiring competency work for special ed and ESL. So we work a lot with our teachers on those internships. So you can see on the chart, we've done dozens of competency portfolios for the DESI for our ESL and special ed teachers. ESL mostly is adding a license, so they're doing the internship for that. The waivered teachers are actually, they have the same qualifications as an emergency licensed teacher, but perhaps they missed the deadline to apply, or they weren't working on being a teacher at that time. So we have the same exact supports for the waivered teachers as well. And in addition to the internships, we do do MTAL prep for many of the most, you know, popular MTALs, the most common MTALs, and vouchers as well. And various other induction supports. There's another slide. Well, while she's working on that, I thi-- do you have the presentation or no?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. So for, since two thousand nineteen, we've been recipients of the Teacher Diversification Pilot Program grant through the DESI. And we're looking forward to that coming out again, probably later this month. Our main focus for my, for my department was around paras with bachelor's degrees who were diverse and supporting the work of those paras becoming teachers. And so we've been working on that over the past five years. And over the last few years, we've partnered with MLE and now last year Innovation to really grow this, to look at pathways from the high school into the teaching profession, so it's pretty exciting work. And we're gonna continue that this year. And then moving on from there, another support for our emergency and waiver teachers. And you know, it's very important that we get everybody to be fully licensed because it's it's important for our kids, but also it's the last extension for most of the, a lot of our emergency license holders. So the DESI made Salem State the recipient of their Metro North Regional Center for Educator Licensor Support. So all of our teachers that hold these emergencies licenses or are waived, they have voucher support, reimbursement for childcare, transportation, other expenses they might have due to having to take an MTAL. So that's another support that they can all access. And they are all communicated with on a pretty routine basis to access those supports. And so our last slide is next steps, and it is the path of recruitment retention. So we start with defining the Lynn Public Schools needs, write our job descriptions that align with our priorities, plan our recruitment sourcing strategy, review applications and screen candidates. And then we move on to our interviews and evaluating the top candidates. Make our job offer. We onboard through HR and within the district. And now we have our new hires starting their careers with Lynn Public Schools. Any questions?
Member Peña.
Thank you for the presentation. It was pretty neatly put together. Appreciate it. I can appreciate also the exit survey to find out, you know, we hear it all the time, teachers are leaving. We wanna know why and what can we do better? With the, the, well, we were just, with the paras with the bachelors that that are, you know, you're moving along to become teachers, what's the numbers on that? Do you, do you have a number on how many are enrolled or?
So we've had, like a group, we track the group over the years. Over the years, we've had like over a hundred paras take MTAL prep supports and attain, receive vouchers as well over the years. But we have a lot more, we have more paras taking the coursework, like that already have bachelors than we have in the classroom right now. So it's definitely an area where we're still working, but we're often elevating paras to a teacher position since they already love our kids.
Yeah, and they're in the classrooms working with them already.
And obviously you're partnering up with Bobby Bishop and his team there
Yes.
to get some equity across the board. I had a question. Is there a system where we can, let's say if someone applies, right? And is there a system where they can probably get like a, an application number or something that they, they apply? Because one thing that I get a lot, and it's something that's, you know, throughout the years, you hear that people apply and never get called back. And, and, and I've met, you know, over the years, I've met many educators that applied. They, they say they applied. I mean, I don't know. They say that they applied and they never got called back, and then they get called from there, surrounding cities, and, and we lose them. Is there a system where, or maybe there's something we can think of, if someone applies, they get a number and they can refer to that? And we can review and come back. That way, you know, there's, there's more transparency around that.
Yeah, so with TalentEd, which is what we started using maybe four years ago, the candidates have to apply and create their own account. And with that, they're applying within TalentEd. And there's a posting number, and they have the update in there. And so they may be called, or if they're not called, they do get updates as that job is posted. So if someone is hired, so when they apply, it's like, thank you for applying. We're reviewing your application. And if they are called in, there's like, oh, thank you, like, we're gonna pull you in for an interview. But if they don't, there always is like that closure of, we're not gonna be able to move forward with your application. So it's all automatic, and it does happen. Within that, it gets sent through their email address that they do create their profile within TalentEd.
Member Castellanos?
Thank you guys for the presentation. So I have a question around the retention, the onboard and exit surveys. What have been some of the issues or the trends that you guys are seeing with some of the exit interviews?
Some of them, so we, we encourage them to fill them out all the time, but we don't always get all the responses from the people who resign. A lot of it is just when they're on-boarded and going into a school, they may not feel like they're a part of the team, like culturally, cuz you know, it's busy at the beginning of the school year. It's very hectic. So I've seen some of that, some wish they had a little bit more support than, you know, than what they've already received. But overall, it hasn't been too many negatives. A lot of it is like, you know, they've had a better opportunity, or you know, they're able to go to a different field that better suits their, you know, their family and home.
I, and I see that, you know, some of the, you know, the, also the retention points, like what you guys are doing, your strategies that you're putting forward, are they effective? Do you feel like they're, they're?
They are effective, but I always feel like we can do more because, you know, what we're doing is effective, but I feel like there's so much more that we could do to kinda get the interest in Lynn and have people like, you know, wanna come here and work for us. So it's, it's fluid, everything is always gonna change, and ideas come up all the time. I mean, you know, the new hire booklet, you know, we were like, how can we help them feel, not feel so like, you know, orientation is one day, and it's like all this information, so we're gonna give them this booklet. So we're constantly trying to think of ideas just to make it better, you know, retain and help them, the ones that don't have their licensure, get their licensure.
One of the areas that we've talked about, so new, new employees get a mentor if they've not been through the mentor program already, because if there's an educator that was working in another district, they may have already gone through the mentor induction process. But one of the things that we have identified is a gap between the support they get through HR and the mentorship program and the support they get at the school level. And our, our principals do a very nice job trying to make sure that people feel, you know, they're part of the team, part of the school, but it can, a staff member can easily get lost in all the stuff that they have to know and do. And so we've talked about having like deliberate checkpoints, intentional checkpoints, where principals meet with their new staff to check in, how are things going? You know, do you need additional support? What can we do to help make your transition smoother for you? Cuz I, I do think it gets hard as the year starts and, and starts moving forward. There has to be intentional times that we're checking in with our new people, so that's something we have talked about.
And also, we have double the amount of hires than we did back when I started in this position in two thousand nineteen. So we're like looking at over two hundred people in induction, and before it was almost just about a hundred.
In two thousand nineteen, we were probably hiring about like almost two hundred people. And every year it increases, cuz when I worked in the payroll department, like that's what, like, you know, we would, after HR, we'd go to payroll, and that's what we, you know, we finished the, the hiring in that aspect. And we're up to like over four hundred. So it's, it's a lot, so.
I just, cuz I did have a couple folks who did end up leaving the district that I talked to, and it was, it was conditions, you know, they were talking about, I guess, not being prepared for urban district, it's urban school experience, right? If you teach, if you have different experiences in different districts, I feel like the mentor piece is really important, right? But you could get lost, so I feel like that's something that's on each school, as you said, right? So what's, what's going to be the system processes updated to make sure that doesn't happen? So we can catch those. I guess it's a big overhaul, obviously, but what do we?
Yeah, and it's gonna take time to put that together. We have twenty-eight schools. So I mean, that's something we're, we wanna work on, and it's just a matter of, you know, what's the best way that we can make all fifteen hundred teachers, like, you know, even the existing teachers feel like that sense of belonging and that, you know, they wanna stay in Lynn.
I have another question around the advertisement. I didn't see the cost breakdown for, like, I don't know how much, I don't know, I don't know, I know social media's been very active. Actually, I'm very impressed with the way that we're rolling out some of the postings on social media. Did we get like good results from those efforts?
With the digital boards, that cost was ten thousand dollars out of the human resources budget. The hits we got were close to like a million, so the advertising company that I used, they did give me like a follow-up, like, this is how many hits, like people were able to see it on each one. So that was successful, and people did see it. We do have on the application, like, how did you hear about this job? And so we are reviewing that, but you know, it's, it's not a requirement, but we've made it a requirement now so that we can get a better idea. And a lot of it's like, you know, maybe like social media, maybe they saw it on LinkedIn, that type of thing, so we're tracking that now. But we did get a lot of hits of people like seeing it, and they were able to provide us with that information.
Okay, okay. I know we had a pipeline, didn't we? Have a recruitment pipeline from the, from the high schools. We're looking to
Yeah, that's still currently, yeah.
That's part of the teacher diversification pilot.
Yes, and so in the recruitment plan, under intra-departmental efforts, it's kind of like what MLE and DEI, like, we're all working together in the recruitment plan. It's, we're still doing that.
And how the numbers look? Are we?
As of last year, I know that working with MLE, Amanda Campbell, they were, it was going very well. We haven't been able to connect for this year.
We have like seventy-five high schoolers across our high schools that were part of the, you know, teacher, future teacher club and those efforts. We continue to try and recruit as many as we can. They all get an opportunity to go to a school, be part of a classroom, you know, so that they actually experience what it's like to be in a classroom. And of course, the LVTI program, their internship is in Lynn Public Schools.
Who's a teacher now?
Yeah. Yep.
Thanks. Member Gailey.
Gailey, the positive is I really like your new hire orientation booklet. I think it'll be very useful to people coming in and all of the list of names and extensions so that they can call and find out what they need to do to get their pay, get certified. I'm glad you explained about people not getting called back, because that's important to know, that if they don't fill it out correctly to begin. I love the idea that you're getting the exit interviews, but what was the number one reason people are leaving?
I wouldn't say there was like one that stood out more than the other, but a lot of it is people were leaving to go to maybe a different job entirely, or another district, or, you know, more opportunity.
So it really wasn't that they weren't getting what they needed here in Lynn. It was more like
Yeah, they could go.
This may not be for them. Teaching may not be for them.
Yes, some of it was that.
Then the checkpoints as, as Ms. Vergero was speaking about, Deputy Vergero. Have you looked into possibilities of long-term subs? Teachers that are starting, coming into a position that didn't have the opportunity to be trained? Like the teachers that went, like got hired in June, they were trained during the summer, and they know what their job is. So how are we gonna work with those stu-- those people coming in as teachers, novice, like coming into our district? And how do you have something for them?
So this year, we started rolling induction. So we did notice last year that we had so many teachers start after the beginning of the school year and after October even, so, and none of them got mentors or any of the induction program professional development. So this year, as they come in, they're gonna be put right into induction, hooked up with a mentor at their school. And it includes all the long-term subs too that we have right now. I'm not talking about someone who'd be in the classroom for twenty-five days, you know, somebody covering a maternity leave or something like that. They're also all rolled into the induction program. They'll have a mentor, and we're starting, and to make up the time they've missed, you know, September, October, let's say they start in November, we're having our induction coordinators and me as well, I'll be there, doing a district, a mandatory district meeting where we're gonna talk about some of the concepts they missed in the beginning, like classroom management routines and things, something we cover in September with the mentees.
So they're able to catch up?
Yeah.
So?
As best we can. I mean, we're not a college program for years focused on education, but you know, we try to give the--
What I'm thinking is like they're, they'll transition. And once they made that transition, they'll possibly come back in the, in the future in a position
Yeah, that's the hope.
similar to that of their long-term sub, cuz there's so many jobs that we have to fill.
Yeah, and they do come in, like we fill out the waivers, they have to apply for licensure with DESI, but they get the same supports. You know, if that's what they're pursuing, like they'll get the same supports as we offer currently for the new hires that start in September as well.
Thank you. Thank you both very much.
Thank you both for the, for the presentation. I'll just say that the update's helpful. I also think it's worth taking a moment to pause on some of the, the numbers around the teacher diversity and the, and the administrative diversity. That has been an explicit goal of ours for, for some time for the district. And there's a lot going on in retention and recruitment, we get that, but, but these, but these numbers represent really meaningful progress for, for us as a, as a, as a community and a priority that we've all had. And I just wanted to thank everybody, including, you know, particularly those folks that have stepped up into this profession to, to educate our, our students, but, but everybody that's in, you know, playing a supportive role. Because it is, it is a goal, and we know that it's gonna benefit our students. And I know that we are all particularly excited about the Grow Your Own pipeline and, and making sure that we support our students to get them into these roles and how powerful that is for our district, and so we're just thrilled to get that update as well. So, thank you. Yeah, member?
I had one more question. Do you work directly with the superintendent and deputies? Are you working with them?
Yes, yes.
And how often do you?
We just had an hour meeting today, for example.
And it was just, just referring, you know, women,
Yeah.
strong women, women of color and educators, you know, with your experience, you might have a little, you know, helping with strategizing and recruiting. you might have a little, you know, unstrat, helping with strategizing and recruiting.
Thank you.
Next is, thank you so much. The next is the K to two report card update.
And for the update, we have the curriculum team. Patty Hebert, Chief Academic Officer, and Kelsey Bartlett.
Um, good evening. My name is Kelsey Bartlett. Um, I recently took over as the Assistant Director of Early Childhood for the Curriculum Department. Um, and this summer I gathered a team to revise the standard-based K to two report cards. Um, so it was really, actually it was really fun. I got to bring together some teachers. I got to work with assistant directors. Um, and basically what our goal was, um, was to use a developmentally appropriate lens when revising the report cards. Um, we discuss using asset-based language, revising the rating scale and appropriately graying out the skills and standards that are not addressed during each trimester. Um, so basically as you can see on this slide, the old rating scale, um, not that, not that it was bad, but I think that we, you know, there's always room for improvement, um, like HR was saying, and I agree with them. Um, so what we tried to do is give a description that parents can understand, but also that is, um, simplistic enough that it, you know, we had some extra words at, at certain times that we didn't need. Um, and we wanted to adjust this rating scale to be more asset-based. Um, and also to provide more feedback on student progress. Because as you know, we do a lot of work in our classrooms. There's so much that we do together to educate our students. And I think it's important that we're effectively informing families um, in order to, you know, continue that family engagement and that bridge that we build to work together. Um, so when we adjusted the rating scale, um, we changed it. We, um, put mastery, progressing, developing and beginning. And we use those words also in the content areas because I think at times it can be difficult to be going back and forth between two, you know, you're, you're like looking at the rating scale and then you're looking at the grade and there's a lot of back and forth. So the team, actually, that was actually the team's idea, that wasn't me. Um, but I thought it was a great idea because it simplified the process of reading the report card. Um, and it also aligns with developmental stages. Um, you know, developing is, is a lot nicer than needs improvement, you know? And they both do send a very similar message. Um, but I think it, it does just have that asset-based lens that honors the development of our youngest students. Um, we also tried to have clarity of that progression, um, like I mentioned, with that updated rating scale. Um, so we also, this was a big thing, um, that I'm really excited about, um, less letters, um, which adds to the ease of a parent reading this document. Um, in the past, before it, we had NT for standards that were not assessed at this time. And what we chose to switch to was just a grayed out box. So it's one less, you know, up and down look that you have to make when you're trying to read that document. And once you understand what that means, it helps you as the parent to understand it. Um, so together, um, like I said, we thought it would provide, you know, just a more like aesthetically pleasing document. Um, we can focus on the standards that we assess because we, we work on a lot in those classrooms and the teachers work really hard. So we wanted to honor that work that everyone is doing. Um, and the consistent design at each trimester allows a consistent and aesthetically pleasing design. And it also signals that the standard will be addressed in a future term, which I think is really helpful for everyone, teachers, administrators and parents, to all be on the same page about the learning progression as we teach the standards throughout the school year. As you know, there are certain standards that are addressed at certain times developing, um, through the child's education. Um, we also used I can statements. So, um, they, these are standard-based already, but we wanted to add the I can statements because we thought that that was child-friendly and it helps parents and teachers to have conversations with students about their learning goals. Um, it also helps students take ownership of their own learning. Um, these statements break down the standards or objectives into clear and actionable steps, which makes it easier for both students and teachers to focus on the specific skills that they're working on. Um, so in some cases, we did break down some of the standards for line items on the grading to help, um, be more specific and targeted in our grading. Like for example, previously capitalization, punctuation and grammar was one line item, um, which can be difficult to grade in, in one, um, space because those are three different skills. And, you know, it would be a shame to grade a child that they didn't have it, you know, when they had two out of three or, you know, whatever might occur with that child. Um, and also something that's really fantastic about these is that they promote a growth mindset. So those I can statements, just like we use them in our classrooms where we post our agendas and we set, you know, like the tone for the learning, um, it, it connects directly back to that work that we're doing in our classrooms. Um, so some of the standards on the report card have been revised to reflect the updates that have been made in the curriculum mapping. That's part of the reason we felt that there was a need to do this project. And these changes ensure that the report cards are aligned with the most current instructional goals and they reflect what's being taught in the classroom. Uh, and then right there, you just see there's links to the, um, to the, I think you guys have them in front of you. Um, this is just the word document that I created just so that, you know, everyone could be informed and see these. But I'm working with Matt Cronin and Emily Meacham, um, if, if it all goes, you know, to get them into Power Schools if, if that all works out. Um, but I did just want to say that our expected outcomes, um, are that students will have a clear understanding of their academic successes and learning goals. Parents will benefit, um, from the implementation of asset-based language, the updated rating scale with parent-friendly language and the aesthetically pleasing document. And teachers will benefit from an aligned document that more accurately communicates the skills and standards that are being taught at each grade level as they develop across the trimesters. Do you have any questions?
Member Gacy.
No, I, I like the language. I like that. It's, it's, I really appreciate the work that was put into this. Very thoughtful, really robust. Um, how, um, so this is going to be voted in today. Are we implementing this?
If you all vote it in, it's, it will be used this year.
Okay, that's why I just wanted, timeline wise, so we're talking like next, the next.
There'll be plenty of time to get it all.
And families too, like how are we educating the families like to interpret and like, are our staff going to be providing some, you know, family engagement around what this is going to look like, the change?
Yeah. So the curriculum department intends to use a guidance document to help parents, teachers and administrators, for everyone to be on the same page, um, about all that.
Awesome.
That's a great question. Thank you.
All sorts of questions.
Any other questions? Member Gayley.
So I just want to be clear that there was a group of teachers that sat down with you and agreed upon this whole.
Yeah. We, so I gathered a team of K to two educators. We worked together. Um, and, and then, um, content area assistant directors also put their, we all worked together. So basically I met with the teachers, we worked through the standards, we worked through the curriculum mapping documents and the way that would all align. And then assistant directors put their eyes on it just, you know, to give it another look in all the standards and where everything falls and when we teach it based on all of our high-quality materials.
And feedback from principals as well.
Oh, yes, yes. Sorry. Well, yes.
So, um, all the stakeholders were, I think it, it sounds very well written. I think that it'll probably work very well for the K to two. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I really like the I can because it's a very important skill for students to understand that they are able to do this.
Me too. Yeah. Thank you.
Member Gayley.
Do you have a sample for the else, like a bilingual report? Is there a report card like for English learners or in Spanish? Let's say for parents who, you know, bilingual parents, is there a, uh, like for, for Spanish or different language?
Yes. So all of our report cards will be translated in the different, the five top languages. And it, parents who need it in another language will get the same report card, but in, that's translated in their language.
You, you don't have a sample of that?
But we can share one, we can download the different languages and share that.
Yeah, we have past versions translated already, um, but this, this one hasn't been approved yet. So if and when that takes place, we would, we would have it translated. Yeah.
What is the will of the committee?
So motion to approve the K to two report card provisions.
Second. Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gayley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed? Absent. Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the asset-based language is a good reminder for all of us, right?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank you guys.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Good job.
All right. Next item is a request to accept donation of 11 ukuleles and accessories from the Genesis Foundation for Music Education Accessibility for Use at the Washington STEM Elementary.
And the recommendation is to accept the donation of the 11 ukuleles, from the Jansey Foundation for Music Education Accessibility for the Use of Washington STEM Elementary.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have it. Next we have a field trip request for Aborn to go to outdoor classroom in Freedom, Hampshire, November 12th to 15th.
And the recommendation is to approve the field trip request for Aborn Elementary students to attend, um, the outdoor classroom in Freedom, New Hampshire from November 12th to the 15th.
Question?
Yes, I think we have Jenny Hennessy and, um,
Oh, great.
the principal here.
Please come on up. Yeah.
From Aborn.
And Sandy's here too.
Come on up, Sandy.
Hello.
So I just would like you to, we haven't done this program in a long time. And, um, I know that you reached out to me. Um, and I'd like you to explain to the committee the importance of this program because I already understand it.
So, um, before COVID, we went, I went for 20 years, 22 years with Aborn. I went as a child many moons ago with Aborn. It's just an experience that is going to be a once in a lifetime for a lot of our inner-city kids. We are outside all day from 8:00 AM till like 9 o'clock at night. They can do so many more hands-on experiments, experiments and just being in the, like we're talking about the environment and, um, how to conserve things. And from breakfast to dinner, they're talking to them about how did this food get on your table or like from growing it to the truckers that bring it. And they just, they just learn so much in a hands-on way. Um, being able to go on the hikes in the woods, the wildlife they see. They can bring it back to the classroom. Obviously, we're going to talk about a lot of those topics in fifth grade science. But the materials and the hands-on is more than we can do in the classroom. So.
And I really want to commend you for, for bringing it back, bringing it forward. And I'm sure that there's a lot of other elementary schools right now going, I wish I got this done.
Yeah, I'm hoping that, um, you know, they see us going, we can, we used to have four or five schools that went with us. So it'd be great to have other schools onboard from now on.
So if you're from another elementary school and you're listening, next year would be a good time to start because it is a very good program. And I want to add that, um, I believe the science, science scores at Aborn are like the top, uh, fifth grade. And it has continued for, I don't know how many years, 20? How many years have you been there?
Uh, I've only been in fifth grade for about six now, but yeah.
Uh, before that it was recalc, so in this program. So I just want to thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Does somebody like to make a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion. So now I'm going to make the motion. Motion, um, to accept the request for Aborn Elementary to the outdoor classroom in Freedom, New Hampshire from November 12th to the 15th in 2024.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gayley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed? Absent. Member Sadowite? Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congrats. Next item is a resolution regarding charter school expansion. Uh, we have a resolution here in your packet. I will read that for the record. Um, and then we can discuss whether we want to adopt it, if that sounds okay with everybody. Whereas the Lynn School Committee believes that a fully funded and supported public school system open to all school-aged children is essential to the educational well-being of students, professional well-being of educators and the future of the city of Lynn. Whereas funding required to establish and to expand charter schools in Lynn would be detrimentally impacting Lynn's students, educators and school district as a whole, given the great cost to educate the 16 plus 17,000 in our 28 public schools, especially in line of the cost to educate our special needs and English language learner populations that maintain a vocational school. Whereas KIP Lynn's new request to expand to a maximum of 3,200 seats would result in an additional drain of approximately $24 million from Lynn Public Schools, reaching a total of more than $51 million in charter tuition payments from Lynn Public Schools to KIP Lynn once the desired expansion is fully phased in. And whereas the availability of additional charter expansion seats in Lynn due to learning loss from the pandemic has the effect of severely penalizing at exactly the moment it is beginning to establish momentum to reverse learning loss. Whereas Lynn Public Schools has the second highest number of newcomers in the Commonwealth, close to Boston's numbers, 643 in Boston compared to 602 in Lynn, though Boston is triple Lynn's size. And most newcomers who arrive at all times of year and span, all ages, could not be served by charter with limited application windows and age restrictions. Whereas Lynn has a substantial population of English language learners and students with special needs who may be underserved in a charter school setting. Whereas the teachers and paraprofessionals of Lynn must meet certain standards for certification and licensure not required by charter schools. Whereas the teachers and paraprofessionals of Lynn enjoy collective bargaining rights and benefits which aim to ensure fair treatment that sorely would be missed in a charter school setting. Therefore, be resolved, the Lynn School Committee opposes the establishment or expansion of charter schools in the city of Lynn and respectfully urges the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to consider the resolution herein upon review of applications for charter school establishment or expansion in Lynn. We discussed last spring, uh, the implications of the release of the, uh, MCAS district rankings, which, uh, I, I might remind folks, uh, are much narrower in scope than the, than the accountability conversation that we had in our last meeting. We talked about a lot of the progress that, that Lynn is ma, making. These rankings are ba, based on a much narrower view of, uh, performance. And, uh, we have, uh, been working together as soon as we got, uh, indications that, that this was, um, unfolding. And I, you know, like to think our partners with the, the teachers union, the, the entire LPS team and administration and all the folks, the, the Lynn School Committee, everyone that's reached out. Uh, I think it would be a great step for the Lynn School Committee to go on record this evening. Uh, there will be obviously a lot more on a conversation unfolding about this. I think there's a lot of unfortunate aspects of the way this plays out. And, and, you know, one, one of the really meaningful ones for me is just, is, is the unfortunate way it, uh, pits members of our community against one another. Um, and, uh, I know we all find that really troubling. Um, and I think I certainly, uh, want to communicate that w- w- we respect all our students and families in the entire city, regardless of where they're sending their students. And, uh, we can and should take, uh, the policy positions we believe are in the best interests of everyone and at the same time can value everyone as an individual and, and their individual choices. And I, and I think, um, you know, as, as, as public officials, that, that, that's an important part of our role. And so while, while sort of starting from that premise that we, that we value everybody individually, and I think it's, it's also really our role to point out the harm that this would do to the district as a whole. And so I, uh, I hope that, uh, you all, uh, join me in sending that message tonight. Member Dugan?
Yeah. Um, full support of this. I, I think another part to remember is that, uh, what happened in 2016 with, uh, the No On Two movement, that, you know, charter school expansion got voted down resoundingly in Massachusetts. And I think the numbers in Lynn were like 62% to 38 or something along those lines. So, you know, I, I think that's important to remember as well. Um, you know, that it's, it's not a popular decision to expand our charter schools. So. And as elected officials, we do need to consider that. So, I'm full support of this.
That's a great point. Thank you. Uh, Member Peña, Member Gayley.
I'm full support of this and, uh, just echo, you know, Member Dugan. You know, it'll just, just detrimental to Lynn Public Schools, especially when we have momentum and, and turning things around right now. It's not, you know, professors. As a public official, I stand behind it.
Gayley?
I am in full support of this and, and it's, it really aggravates me as it does, I'm sure, every person in Lynn Public Schools, that at a time of need, our greatest need, where we are turning ourselves around, where we have a new superintendent that has a new vision that is moving us forward. vision that is moving us forward, has brought us up, where we had so many schools and, and wanting, and like, to, to bring those three back and then have, what was it, nine schools that, like, were just below it, to make that kind of growth, and then turn around and we're taking the most newcomers. We have a highest number of special needs, and to turn around and say, let's take this money and put it onto a charter school and take away from the people that we are serving in Lynn Public Schools is so wrong, and it irritates me so much, and I'm sure everybody gets aggravated with it. And so I highly, I'm behind this, a hundred percent. And once they start following the same rules we have to follow as educators, and follow the same rules we have to follow to build our new buildings, and all the other things that are not the same, then this is ridiculous to even come forth to ask for it.
Member Castellanos?
Yeah, I, I'll be remiss to echo and feel the same about what's happening. It's injustice, it's, it's really disturbing, really, to, really, when you really, really peel back the impact of what this looks like. I'd like to just make a motion to, to approve this resolution to support the, the resolution that you just put forward. Mayor?
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I, I just want to, also, there's, there's ways for folks to get involved. I really encourage the city and everyone to mobilize in the city, to push forward, get involved in what's happening. I know the Lynn Teachers Union's putting a lot of material out there, I know we're putting a lot of material out there, so I think you get involved and really let your voice be heard about this injustice that is being put forward.
That's, it's a great point, member Castellanos, and let me add that if anyone has any questions about what's going on, there's going to be a lot of conversation about this, and I would encourage folks to, to reach out, to the LPS administration, absolutely feel free to reach out to me in my office for, for, to sort of clarify some of the issues here, or if you need information. I will, I, I, I believe that the, our colleagues in, in government, on the City Council, will be taking up this, this resolution at their next meeting on, on Tuesday, and, and I would like to thank the council, those counselors that I have spoken with on that. And I also want to thank the state delegation, Senator Crichton, representatives Cahill, Capano, Armini have all, have all been, been strong supporters in, in helping us respond in, in, in this issue, so. With that, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Sadowite, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Next item we have is a resolution calling for passage of question two to replace the MCAS graduation requirement. I will read that into the record, and then we can open it up. Whereas access to a high-quality, publicly-funded education is a guaranteed right written into the Massachusetts Constitution. Whereas the goal of public education is to teach students essential foundational skills such as reading, writing, and arithmetic, and to develop critical thinkers, engaged citizens, and lifelong learners. And whereas the bedrock of the Commonwealth's world-class public education system is strong statewide standards that are uniform throughout our public schools. And whereas the MCAS is significantly limited in its ability to accurately and effectively measure whether students are meeting the Commonwealth's standards and developing the skills they need to thrive after high school. And whereas the most effective measures of whether students are meeting our strong statewide standards and developing the skills they need to succeed in college, the workforce and beyond are educator-led assessments such as projects, papers, tasks, and group activities that are conducted throughout the school year. And whereas the punitive use of MCAS as a high school graduation requirement has restricted curriculum and shifted the focus of education in our public schools toward meeting a test score instead of fostering an environment of creativity, critical thinking, and real teaching and learning that helps students realize their full potential. And whereas pediatricians, researchers, and school counselors have warned of the severe impact of high-stakes testing like the MCAS graduation requirement on students' mental health and well-being. And whereas standardized test requirements notoriously stack the deck against students of color, ESL students, and those with learning disabilities. And whereas using MCAS testing as a high school graduation requirement has prevented or delayed thousands of students earning a diploma and thereby interrupting or derailing education or career plans with especially harmful impacts on students of color, low-income students, students with disabilities, and students for whom English is their second language. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Lynn School Committee supports passage of question two to replace the MCAS graduation requirement, and require instead the district certified students have satisfactorily completed coursework demonstrating mastery of the skills and knowledge required by the Commonwealth's strong statewide standards in order to graduate. Dr. Alvarez, you want to speak to this?
So, in our, in our research, not only of what the learning loss looks like over, throughout the entire state, and the recovery process of that learning loss, when this, when the MCAS comes into play, we looked at some of the weighted formulas, which we shared at the last meeting, in terms of what the criterias are, how it was weighted prior to this year, and how the, the change took effect. And the, the concern is the impact on students and their graduation rates, and how it reflects inequitably on our, on the students of color, and specifically our students here in Lynn, because we have a disproportionate amount of students that are in the categories that we see the test scores continue, right, to, to shift. And so we want to make sure that we eliminate the MCAS as a, not that we don't believe in accountability, but that we eliminate it as a punitive form of accountability.
Thank you.
Make a motion?
Yeah, we can, we can, yeah. Oh, sorry. Yeah, no, yep. Motion?
Yeah, make a motion to support the resolution calling for passage of question two to replace the MCAS graduation requirement, whereas we just, you know, all that, you just recited.
Yep, yep, you don't have to read it again. All right, motion made, seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, just a quick, obviously, I'm full support of this. Being an educator, you know, I live this, I'm looking at numbers right now, I haven't shaved today, kind of, we're doing that stuff today. So it's, it's a lot, it's a lot, and to lift the punitive action off of it would be a big burden off the shoulders of our students and our educators. And we can really focus on just educating the whole child and, and get away from, you know, teaching to a test, because we do do it. As much as we say we don't, we do. We want those scores to be good, and when they're not, our, you know, as an educator, again, when your name's attached to it, it's, it's not a good feeling. So, full support of this, and I do appreciate that the committee has, has brought this forward. It's, it's really, deeply appreciate it, so thank you.
Member Gailey?
I totally concur with you, Mr. Dugan. I recall, I, I'm trying to remember, Sheila, do you remember the year that it came out? Ninety-eight?
Yeah.
The first class? And I had students that had taken it, and this one poor girl could not pass the math, and she couldn't pass it. And at her senior year, like, getting just a, a slip of attendance, she told me that I'm going to pass this test because it's not going to hold me back. But this has held so many students back, and it's so unfair that we are teaching to a test. We're not teaching to an actual joyful learning, because really, learning is joyful, when you're learning new things, and it's not because of a test, but because you're learning for the content. Totally, totally am glad that we are doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Sadowite, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Thanks, everyone. Next item is superintendent's evaluation discussion and ratings review. So I think what we'd like to do is present out the results of the evaluation. So you remember last time we heard from Dr. Alvarez about the evidence, and then everybody submitted, thank you, by the way, for everyone, submitted their evaluations, working with Danny from my team, we compiled them, and then I have this cover note here, so we'll share that, take a vote, depending on the will of the committee, that will be the evaluation, and then we will talk about the next evaluation. And Dr. Alvarez has some, some goals to present, and we can hear that presentation. If we're on the same page, we can adopt those as the goals for the next year, and we will also discuss the indicators to go along with those goals, and then the next evaluation will be based on both these goals and those indicators. So let's start with the, the evaluation for two thousand and twenty-four, and I'll just read the, the cover note here, so we don't tick through each of the boxes here, will be put into the record. So while this evaluation is more limited in scope than a typical evaluation, it's clear that Dr. Alvarez is off to a strong start. We will soon be selecting the goals and indicators for the next year, setting us up to complete the first full evaluation cycle for Dr. Alvarez as a new superintendent next year as she completes her first two years. On the first goal for effective entry and direction setting, most members rated Dr. Alvarez as having met the goal, with one member rating exceeded another significant progress. On the second goal for maintaining momentum, her ratings were even stronger, with three exceeded, two met, and one significant progress. And on the third and final goal for new superintendent induction, her ratings were stronger still, with five exceeded and one met. With every rating at significant progress or above, and the most common rating being exceeded, the committee clearly sees a lot of great momentum and significant potential for excellence. Appreciate the committee for completing this evaluation in a timely and thoughtful manner. So those are the overall results. We have compiled here in the format that we had sent earlier, each member's rating for each of the goals, which we will, wherever we keep these evaluations, will be entered into the evaluation. Any questions? All right, is there a motion to accept the evaluation?
Motion to accept the evaluation.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Mayor Nichol-
Yes.
Member Sadowite, absent. Mayor Nicholson.
Yes. Okay. All right, and so next, we'll ask Dr. Alvarez to propose goals, and then we'll talk about indicators.
So there are six goals that are being proposed for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The first goal is fostering multilingual learners literacy proficiency for lifelong success. This empowers multilingual learners to achieve K-12 literacy and proficiency, equipping them with language skills and knowledge needed to actively engage in daily life and succeed in diverse educational and life pursuits. Below that is the measure of success, which would be based on the district strategic plan priority number one. For goal two, there's promote inclusion and support equitable practices for students with disabilities and individual education plan compliance. This would reduce disparities in IEP language and document support parental involvement for students with disabilities by implementing inclusive and supportive strategies. The measure of success is stated, which we are, we want to keep district momentum at at least eighty-five percent or higher. The baseline data from twenty-two, twenty-three is sixty-seven percent. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we completed, the end of the, the year was compliance rate of ninety-three percent. So, but we want to make sure that we always keep eighty-five percent or higher, that is the goal, and that is based on district strategic plan priority four. Goal, goal three, build inclusive communities, foster belonging for educators and students, which foster a strong sense of belonging and inclusivity among educators and students, creating a supportive and welcoming educational environment. We want to continue to look at the student survey that was administered as a district baseline. It was a climate survey administered to grades three to twelve, and that's based on district strategic priority four. And as well as reduce chronic absenteeism for all students, from thirty-one percent to twenty-six point nine percent. That's based on district strategic plan priority four as well. Goal four is to integrate mathematics and literacy skills for global engagement and success. That's to equip all students with the interdisciplinary skills to excel as informed and responsible communicators and problem solvers in a global society, nurturing their success through the integration of mathematics with literacy. The measures of success are student growth for grade ten, as well as student growth, and the increases are there for numeric purposes for grades three through eight in math as well, and these are both based on district strategic plan priority one. Goal five is to advance equitable access to advanced coursework, and that would ensure that all students, regardless of their background, have equitable access to advanced coursework opportunities, fostering their academic excellence, and preparing them for college and career readiness. There's some, there are measures of success here based on district's strategic plan priority three, but specifically with a focus on PSAT administration, advanced placement coursework, and dual enrollment and early college coursework. And the last goal is to implement the district's turnaround strategy, create the conditions for schools to improve student achievement, demonstrating strong instructional and operational leadership, implement a data-driven decision-making process for district systems, promote the portrait of an LPS graduate by developing a culture of high expectations for students and staff, lead teacher cabinets and empower educators to lead and support turnaround strategies, increase community involvement and partnerships to contribute to the district's turnaround process, provide resource allocation through school-based budgeting, provide social, emotional, and health supports for all students, and lead school design and innovation. And so those would be evidenced by policies and administrative procedures that support each of those structures and goals within the DESI framework. So those are the six proposed goals this evening. The last page just has, it's just descriptions like a glossary for purposes of understanding.
Any questions on the goals?
Just more of a comment, so I appreciate the, the way you're measuring, the way, it's very clear, it's concrete, it's easy to read. I think some of the, for goal six, there's a lot of bullet points, it's, it's a lot. Do you feel like goal six could be split into a, is that the, for me, you know, it, could it be expanded into like a goal, I don't want to say like a goal seven, but like, could it be, was it too much to just let out, let, let go? If that makes sense, like?
Yes, it makes sense, and I think it would be, this is an extension of what we did this year.
Yeah.
Leading into, unfortunately, what happened with the rankings, right? We, but, all of these bullets are what was really documented in the template for the evaluation that you looked at.
Okay.
And these are just extensions, really taking it to a deeper level in terms of examining policy structures that we currently have, or, or in the absence of some of those structures that need to be in place for student and teacher success.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Why don't we, why don't we vote on the goals, and then we'll do the indicators, all right? So after, what's the will of the committee?
So motion to accept the superintendent goals for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Great.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Sadowite, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Great. Now the indicators. There are a total of a couple dozen indicators. They're not numbered here.
I wish I had the hot coffee in front of me.
The, yeah, I, I, the, the hot coffee's right here. The DESI evaluation recommended process asks us to select six to eight. It says that the recommendation is It says that the recommendation is that there be at least one in each of the standards. So you recall, there's four standards, and then each standard has, um, four to seven indicators. They're lettered and not numbered, so it's approximate. So, we're looking to select six of those. We asked, um, for some submissions, um, and why don't I walk through six that were put forward, and we can, um, see if anyone wants to suggest any changes and hopefully come to a consensus of what we want.
Six put forward on who, from who?
Uh, Member Dugan sent
Okay.
four, and then I suggested two to add, just so we could get to six.
Yeah, okay.
But, you know, this is, we're looking to try to establish a consensus here, so. Under standard one curriculum, uh, under standard one instructional leadership, the indicators are A curriculum and curriculum, B instruction, C assessment, D evaluation, E data-informed decision-making, and F student learning. And, uh, Member Dugan had put forward A, and then I, I suggested B instruction, so curriculum and then instruction under instructional leadership. Under standard two, management operations, there's environment, human resources management and development, scheduling and management information systems, law, ethics, and policies, fiscal systems. And Member Dugan had put forward environment, and then I suggested adding HR, management, and development, as well. And then under family, community, and engagement, there's engagement, sharing responsibility, communication, family concerns. And Member Dugan had suggested, um, family concerns.
Yes.
Yes. Um, and then under professional culture, there's commitment to high standards, cultural proficiency, communications indicator, continuous learning, shared vision, and managing conflict. And Member Dugan had suggested communications. So that would be six. I certainly am flexible, we had, we could add, um, a couple others as well, but that would get us at least one in each of the standards. Other thoughts? Member Castellanos?
I'm not sure, did you mention environment under management and operations?
Yes.
And, okay, I just want to, I do support that.
Yeah, so stand, so let me just recap it.
Yeah, recap what we're
Standard one is instructional, and the indicators would be curriculum and instruction.
Yep.
Standard two is management operations, and the indicators would be environment and human resources management and development.
Okay.
Standard three is family and community engagement, and the indicator would be family concerns. And then standard four is professional culture, and the indicator would be communications. My, my experience in doing these evaluations is that there is some overlap among the indicators, and so, uh, when, when it comes time to do the evaluation, we're, we're, we're gonna have a, really a chance to evaluate the full scope of the work. And I, and I think I have no doubt that the superintendent will be submitting evidence that will, you know, run, run the gamut. And so, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be too concerned about picking exactly the right indicators. Um, and that's part of the, I think that's probably part of the rationale of having one in each standard is cause, you know, by doing that, we're gonna cover a lot. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
So, motion to accept the proposed indicators.
Dr. Alvarez, you want to comment at all on that?
Yeah, I think those are more than appropriate, and I'm, I'm certain there'll be more evidence than, than just, um, on these specific indicators.
Right, and as always, as superintendent, you're responsible for it all, you know?
Yeah.
And that's part of it. And that, that's, that's the, the challenge and the, uh, reality, so, um, great. Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed, absent. Member Sadowite, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Before we move on, I just, I want to read into the record the rest of full evaluation here, just so, to make it official. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna read the goals and then people's ratings, um, that we proved. Goal one, effective entry and direction setting for superintendent. By early spring, the district will have broad agreement from key stakeholder groups about A, the district's most critical needs, B, the strategies and goals that will address them most effectively, and C, the measures that will be used to assess progress. Exceeded was rated by Member Gaetley. Met was rated by Member Castellanos, Member Dugan, Member Peña, and myself. And significant progress is made by, rated by Member Reed. District improvement goal number two, maintaining momentum during the transition for district improvement. Keep the district moving forward during this year's transition in leadership by working with principals and other district leaders to ensure that meaningful progress is made on critical district and school goals. Exceeded was selected by Member Gaetley, Member Peña, and myself. Met was selected by Member Dugan and Member Reed. And significant progress is selected by Member Castellanos. District improvement goal number three, professional practice, new superintendent induction program. New superintendent induction program, develop skills in strategy development, data analysis, and instructional leadership by actively engaging in the first year of the new superintendent induction program. Exceeded was selected by Member Castellanos, Member Gaetley, Member Peña, Member Reed, and myself. And Met was selected by Member Dugan. And that, tho- those are the accurate ratings that you all submitted correctly, compiled that correctly. Just want to make sure, okay, good, great work. Um, okay, thank you. All right, next item is communications and information.
So, uh, we have one update on the Magnet Schools Assistance Program grant. The district received notification that we were not selected for the grant award this year. And I just want to touch upon, we had a call with the Department of Education to specifically discuss, it was this morning, to discuss some of the feedback that was given by the reviewers. It really touches upon developing and strengthening our multi-tiered systems of support um, across the district and having the policy and documentation that really, um, supports that in, in the adaptive work and how we can prove that if we were to resubmit an application. Uh, it also, the part of the feedback was to have a policy on lottery procedures in the event that the student requests and applications exceed the number of seats that are available. And there were two additional comments. One was about the evaluation of the methodology. There always a requirement to have external researchers, but we also have a fairly new data department. So, there was, um, there was somewhat a lack of connection between the evaluation process and the proposed, uh, methodology, the, the pedagogy that teachers would be, which was, uh, project-based learning. So, we have started the professional development for project-based learning, but we've only done that recently, right? We started in the spring, so, um, the last one was regarding the control group and design for our students because we had the two traditional high schools in the application and the STEAM Academy, which would, you know, ev- eventually go online. But having the two traditional high schools doesn't leave any students for an accurate control group. Meaning, the students that are receiving the treatment being in the magnet program and the students not receiving in the treatment, right? That would fit the similar profile of student, which is not FDCA, which is not Te- LinTech, because both of those have their own application criteria. And so, that certainly poses some challenges for us in terms of having both of the high schools at the same time because we don't have a comparison group of our own. And it's difficult to have controls outside, or some districts have done virtual controls. And there are evaluators that do that, but it, it is a very difficult process to do, right? So, tho- that was some of the feedback. We are grateful to all of the stakeholders, teachers, parents, students that provided us with, you know, a lot of the, the, um, the information that we needed to really look at the pathways that we, that we want to implement, and we will continue to work with that information to see what pathways are certainly, uh, viable in our high schools, uh, with or without the grant. And, you know, we, we intend to go back and, and apply. Not, we will wait a little bit, we're not sure if we're going to do it next spring, but we will, um, bring it up if, if we feel that all of these other structures, right, are in place and solid enough for us to be able to, uh, launch. There was some concern about the sustainability of us having, um, a grant of that magnitude uh, and the accountability of it when we ha- we don't have some of these basic structures in place. So we're working on this, we have been working on them. And I'm confident that in the next year or two, we'll be able to, to resubmit with a very solid application. So, we look at it as that, you know, it as positive feedback in terms of, you know, it was a review for us. We're able to now look at that feedback and strengthen our internal process to make sure that we can go back and resubmit at some point. So that's the update.
Thank you.
And then we, the last communication is the financial quarterly report, Mr. McHugh.
Uh, yes, um, I, in front of you, you have the, uh, first quarterly report for the school year. It's very early as always, uh, we only have like three payrolls in so far, but the salaries are in line. Uh, the only thing that I have a little, I'm watching, as I noted out in the document, is, uh, outer district tuition cost. Uh, right now, I'm projecting a hundred thousand dollar deficit, but I'm not overly concerned today about that because things change. It's so early in the school year, children come, children leave, they move from one setting to another, so, uh, you know, I'm just, uh, that'll be, uh, something we'll be watching throughout the school year. And the reason for that is we have the same number of students, uh, roughly about the same, actually, there's a few less, but the residential costs have escalated, and the placement of our students, uh, in those residentials, I mean, we have students that are getting over a thou- five hundred thousand dollars for a residential placement right now, which is driving the cost up. It's actually, you know, you can see in the thing, it's o- over a million dollars up from last year projected, which is a little high, but those things we don't always have control over, but we will be watching it, and hopefully, you know, the ebbs and flows of students in and out that we can get this back down within the budget number. And if not, later, as we get later in the year, if we have to make adjustments, I'd bring those forward to you to make those adjustments. If there's any questions, I can answer them.
Yeah, Member Castellanos?
My, my question is just around the system. This is the new system that you've been using?
No, this is still Munis right now.
Oh, so Munis, okay.
Yeah, we're in the processes, right now, as we explained before, uh, we're in the process of building out the new system. It's pulling now all the information from Munis, they did their first poll last week, and it didn't quite a hundred percent match up, so we're working with them to figure out what's off because we need to get that accurate first before we can go forward with it. And the training for our staff is, uh, will be coming up early in December for all our staff. And at that point, we'll be rolling it out and going forward with it so that you can use it towards the budget process for this coming, the next fiscal budget coming up next year.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing no further business.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.